Stothard. Thompson is absent. Festerson.
Here.
Gernat.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Mr. President.
Please rise for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invocation by Council member Jerem.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation, under ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, would you know it's my turn to give the invocation after I've had a trip to the dentist's office. So I won't be saying much other than to ask the Lord to watch out over all those on the council, on our staff, department directors for the work we do and help us make decisions that are in the best good.
Thompson's here. Councilmember Thompson enters chambers. City Clerk served on publication of daily record on June 8th, notice for your council and regular city council meeting June 12, 2012. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by public law, may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage of debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you, as a lot of people know, and hopefully most of you know, Juneteenth
And this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a second to recognize the group we have visiting us today.
is a celebration where even though the Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1, 1863,
This is the Nebraska Civics Leadership Program sponsored by UNO, and we have about 40 or 50 high school students that are studying political science visiting Omaha from across
it was at least two and a half years prior to that before many of the, many of those who were considered slaves were made known of the information, and many of them were
the state today, talking about Omaha City Government, met with the mayor, had an opportunity to speak with them just a few minutes ago.
made known after the Civil War.
So we appreciate them, their interest, and we want to welcome them to Omaha.
And the program began in, the effort began in Galveston, Texas.
I know they're going to check out the meeting here for a little while and be in Omaha for a couple of days before they head to Washington, which will also be a great experience for
So if I could read the proclamation, Franklin Thompson and I are both, we co-sponsored
them. So thanks for being here.
this, and so we'd both like to read it for you, and we're going to take turns reading
Much more confusing.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, did you?
it for you, and I'll start. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that Councilmember Thompson and and? I can read up a proclamation for the Juneteenth celebration, and we would like for any representatives
Whereas this annual celebration originated in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865, more
of the NAACP or Juneteenth Nebraska, Inc. to come to the podium, please.
than two years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, and?
We have the motion and the second.
Whereas Juneteenth is a vibrant celebration in most cities across the United States as
We do.
Roll call.
well as other countries around the world to reassure each other, to pray and to bring
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
the African-American family together, and?
Whereas Omaha, Nebraska has a week-long celebration in part due to the hard work and extra effort of the Juneteenth Nebraska Incorporated Committee and the Omaha branch of the NAACP, and?
Whereas the city of Omaha's celebration is focusing on education, self-improvement, and raising awareness within the community to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture, and?
Whereas the city council encourages community-wide participation to join these organizations in the 2012 Juneteenth celebration, and?
Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Omaha, do hereby declare the week of June 9 from June to June 16, 2012, as Juneteenth Week in Omaha.
In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 12th day of June 2012.
And we'd like to present these to you.
Thank you.
Photo op.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you care to go right ahead?
Well, on behalf of the Omaha branch of the NAACP.
Your name, please.
My name is Vicki Young. V-I-C-K-I-E-Y-O-U-N-G. I am the Juneteenth chairperson for the Omaha branch of the NAACP. This is my fourth year, and on behalf of the branch and on behalf of our community, I wanted to thank you all, city council, for recognizing Juneteenth. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ms. Willie Williams. I'm the executive director of Juneteenth Nebraska Incorporated. I stand here as you would just thank you, thank you, thank you, just thank you.
Motion approved.
Thank you. This is not a resolution.
Oh, it's not a resolution.
Okay. We need a motion to reinstate the rules.
Motion to reinstate the rules.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Zoning orders on final re-planting board attachments. We will take items 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, and 13, all as one case. 5 is ordinance to rezon property located at 2727 South 156th Street from GI to CC, Community Commercial District, portions of which property lie within the flood fringe and floodway. 6 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 2727 South 156th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 7 ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District to incorporate property located southeast of 156th Street and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 11 is resolution to permit platent titled EQUAL, first edition, located southeast 156th and West Center Road along attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation final subdivision hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 12 is the plat entitled EQUAL, first edition, is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 13 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
The public hearing on agenda items number 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, and 13 begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are you an opponent, sir?
I'm Rex EQUAL owner of the ground and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so you are a proponent, is that correct?
Right.
Would you state your address, please?
My address, 5946 Oak Hills Drive.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed and adopted, 7 to 0. Items 8, 9, and 10 are another case. 8 is ordinance to rezon property located at 885 North HWS Cleveland Boulevard from R6 to MU Mixed Use District. A planning board and planning department recommend denial. 9 is ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement. A planning board and planning department recommend denial. And 10 is ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan with the city of Omaha to de-designate West Dodge Place, 52.5 acres, as mixed use and to allow the addition of 10.8 acres mixed use for the property located northwest of 180th and West Dodge Road. A planning board and planning department recommend denial.
Public hearing on agenda item number 8, 9, and 10 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Dennis Hogan and Jim Boozer, Regency Center in Omaha, here on behalf of the applicant, E&amp;G Investments. We are here this afternoon to ask you to change the master plan as it relates to 10 acres, which exists on the northwest corner of 180th and Dodge Street. Most of you know that 180th Street was envisioned as either a six or eight-lane road, major road, running from county line to county line. Initially, 180th and Dodge was thought to be a rather impressive and important intersection under the master plan, but like many things, things have changed. Village Point, West Village Point exists on the southeast corner of 180th and Dodge. There is an apartment project with some mixed-use zoning on the southwest corner, but then the most dramatic changes have occurred on the north side of Dodge Street. The northeast corner now is a auto mall, and what is just on the northwest corner, which we're dealing with here, is shown in this first exhibit, which shows an aerial of how it now exists. Car dealerships running generally along Dodge Street and some corporate presence. This exhibit, the second exhibit, shows what was actually approved by the city council in 2004. As you can see, it showed predominantly retail and office, and this area right here is what my client owns. It was shown as a 20-acre-plus apartment project. Now, I want to go through the changes that have occurred at this site since then. The first?
Is that better?
Okay. The first change occurred when the north corner, which originally was shown as being predominantly office and retail, was sold to the Lutheran Church of the Master, right here. And on that site currently is a church. I think they have plans for a school as well as a seminary. The next change occurred on the immediate corner at this intersection where the Infinity Dealership was installed, the first car dealership on the site. The next change occurred when Reagan Buick bought the west corner of the site, another car dealership. The next important change occurred when my client was approached by the Elkhorn School District about a middle school that they wanted to build on their property. They did not want to sell, but the school district said, either sell or we'll condemn. So they lose half of their site to a middle school. They end up with approximately 10 acres that we're here to discuss today, another dramatic change in what their use was proposed to be. The next change is the right indicated here, which is the Pinnacle Bank, probably the first improvement on the site, which was consistent with what was originally seen by the council in 2004. The next change is the CSG Headquarters Building, which is somewhat consistent with what was originally seen, and that is currently on the site. The next change, which is again a very dramatic change for my client, occurred back in February, and you may recall the Old Mill Toyota dealership was proposed to be relocated to this site. We originally were concerned and were opposed because with 10 acres left, zone all the family up against another car dealership. The character and fabric of the neighborhood had changed dramatically, and at that time, I think we approached some of you with our original opposition and said, you know, the neighborhood is changing dramatically, and everybody's getting the benefit of the changes except for this 10 acres. We would like to come back at some point in the future and see if we can have the same opportunity to try and change to be consistent with what is in the neighborhood. Many of you said, we'll look at it when you come back. Well, today is the day. And you approved the Toyota dealership, which will be right next to the P's to the south. This is originally what we showed on our site, which was an apartment complex. We are now of the opinion that apartment complex will not work on the site because the retail's gone, most of the office is gone. We now are faced with car dealerships and office buildings and a church. So our proposal, if you approve our request for an amendment, is to go to an office zoning as opposed to all the family, much more consistent with the neighborhood that now exists and consistent with the change in the neighborhood as we've seen. The final exhibit I have for you compares side by side, and I'm not sure which way you can see it best. This is originally, again, what was approved in 2004. This is what we now have. What we're asking for is that the 10 acres in question be allowed to be developed as an office use as opposed to all the family, to be more consistent with the neighborhood as it now exists. 10 acres out of over 1,000 acres on this intersection cannot be very important to the city. It's not a precedent to the master plan, but it certainly helps my clients who have had to bear the brunt of these changes around them. And finally, what I would point out to you is under the concept element of the master plan, you as a city council are allowed to make changes of this nature if you feel that the master plan has changed sufficiently to warrant your approval today. And that's what we would request, is that you allow this 10 acres for my two clients to change as the neighborhood around them has changed. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Strunkin.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Is there anyone here from Old Mill? Old Mill Toyota? Thank you, Mr. President.
We? I move to approve. Well, we need to take, since, Buster Brown City Clerk, since number 8 is a rezoning and it's a recommended denial, we would need to take that as a separate vote because it requires five votes. So let's work, if you want to approve, let's approve only 8 to begin with. Move to approve number 8? Is that correct? Yep.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Chad or Rick, one or the other, Chad maybe, if you can come to the podium. I guess I just want to get a feel for the reason for both the planning board and the planning department recommending denial, and I guess my main question here is if we were to approve this, are we in danger of setting some sort of a precedent if we do that?
Chad, we receive planning.
So two questions. One, the reason for the denial. Two, the precedent-setting nature, if there is any.
Well, I guess I'll answer them together to some extent. We feel that there is a precedent, which is why we're recommending denial. The master plan and zoning scheme out west has been in place for about 15 years or so, this mixed-use zoning, zoning with agreements and particular rules in place. And before that was all put in place, there was, or at least pursuant to it, there was agreement among the most of the development community and planning board and city council and numbers and numbers of committees and subcommittees on how that acreage would be allocated and how it would all work out, and there was a great deal of flexibility built into that system. I can go into as much depth as you might need, but suffice it to say that system exists today and is what we're up against here in terms of the 165 acres of commercial and the 20% variance, which has been granted here. In those 15 years, we have not offered an amendment to that scheme in this way as is being applied for today, so this would be the first. I believe it will be precedent-setting. Mr. Hogan indicated the 10 acres shouldn't matter at this intersection and shouldn't matter in the grand scheme of things, and I would disagree wholeheartedly. We have, in other cases, one just south of Dodge at this same intersection, the intersection is tied together, all four quadrants, have denied a couple of times, once I believe at council, once most recently, did not go forward to council after denying at planning board. We have denied the same type of expansion of a mixed-use area. There is a pretty good line that's being held right now via the system we have together. In older parts of town and in other cities, one of the key questions of zoning is where do you put the various land uses, specifically where do you put the commercial? Generally speaking, if a person can get ground, get commercial zoning, and then find a tenant, which is, you know, not necessarily easy, they've gained a windfall to some extent because their value is greater than others. If we take away a line that we have been able to hold out west with the mixed-use zoning, that is one more call to question for every other piece of ground that is out there. I would reiterate what was discussed this morning briefly with the planning subcommittee. There is 37% of all the mixed-use zoning west of 120th is vacant as of now. There's not any doubt that there is more than adequate ground out there to facilitate development. This is about one particular owner, him trying to achieve value with his ground, which is understandable and, you know, I guess to be expected. But the fact that other folks around them have had changes to their ground, to my mind, you can't cure a problem piece by just upzoning it and trying to raise your value based on what's happened around you. So, back to your questions, I think it would be precedent-setting, and the reason for the denial is mainly that precedent, aside from the fact that there's a whole, a whole number of things in the master plan about how the commercial and the zoning should work, and this doesn't comport with them.
Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, can you come back before you sit?
Chad, we receive planning.
You know, I just have to ask you a couple of questions because I can appreciate where you're coming from. We've talked about this, I've talked to you about this personally with the other issue that you did bring up. But you said, you know, the master plan zoning plan in the first place, it, I think Mr. Hogan was very clear in showing how that original plan has changed. I mean, there has been 10 amendments, and it has changed significantly from what it first was in your plan or in the city's plan. And I can certainly appreciate where they are coming from because I think that this has really impacted the R6 zoning that this property originally had. You know, I can see if it was back where it was originally, that it was supposed to be mixed use with retail and et cetera there, but now it's an office building, a church, a school, and a lot of car dealerships. Now, let me ask you, this was mixed use in there before, is a car dealership a typical item development that you see in a mixed-use area?
Depends on your definition of typical. Yes, it's very common. We have a numbers of car dealerships in mixed-use areas that is a use that is common. I believe it's not permitted. It's a special use, I believe, requires a major amendment in most cases, but we have a number of them in mixed-use areas. It's not at all unusual. To your point, the mixed-use agreement that has excluded this piece of ground has changed numerous times. That's not atypical. We expect that. When someone comes in and tries to plan out 40, 60, 80 acres, it's difficult to nail it right first time out unless you intend to build it all that day. So that's not atypical. What has not ever changed is that this piece of ground has never been a part of that mixed use. It has never been office-commercial. And so the fact that the office-commercial mix in the agreement has changed, which is common, should not impact whether or not this can be office and commercial because it has never been allowed to be. That is the one thing that has held constant throughout all this change.
But to me, it's a lot different to have, you know, a mixed use that you thought you were going to have retail and restaurants and things like that, and some apartments that those people in the apartments would use, and now you're pretty much surrounded by car dealerships out there. You know, I can see how, where the owner is coming from, that this isn't the most desirable place to build apartments now. Now, I understand where you're coming from, too, but you're talking about, aren't you talking about 1,000 acres of this whole area up here, and this is about 10?
200 acres. Is the mixed-use zoned allocated acreage at this intersection essentially 200?
Or, oh, I was going to say 100. It's 200. Okay. All right. Well, I guess my position again is, and I voted to second the approval, is just, I do appreciate where you're coming from. I do. But I just see such a change in what it originally was out here. This is a small area compared to the whole development area out there, and I can see how the multiple car dealerships out there have really impacted what could be put in that small area, understanding that the school district took by eminent domain some of this part, too. So I think they're really restricted. I don't, I kind of felt like you were trying to say that the reasoning behind this was just to get the value up, and I hope you weren't saying this was just like a money grab because I don't see it that way. I don't think that they're just doing it to make it more valuable. I think they're doing it to make it more useful in something that they could, that they feel like would be more appropriate in that area. I just don't see it as just an issue of trying to get more money from that property and sell it off, but that's just my personal opinion. But thank you so much.
Mr. Gernat. Mr. Hogan, would you like to respond?
Dennis Hogan, Regency Center. I don't disagree with a lot of what Mr. Weaver said, other than if you look at the before and the after, first of all, you do have the authority to make the change. Secondly, if you look at what was originally proposed here, hotels, retail, office, how much of it do we have now? As I've said before, the neighborhood has changed dramatically, and the only people who aren't getting the benefit of the change are my two clients. And all we're asking is that they be treated the same as everyone else. The 20-acre apartment project that was originally envisioned right now is very complicated, not by anything they did, but things that the city has previously approved. So all we're asking is that we be able to keep pace with what's happened around them.
The percentage of outcome on the original proposal, your client's apartment complex to the original proposal of the retail, some business in there, would that been relatively high? And now, if I understand you correctly, the 10 acres left with apartments probably would be drastically lower, where they may not even have a chance of renting those out?
They're of the opinion that 10 acres, they're kind of an island in the middle of a mixed-use area that has changed dramatically from they first purchased it. When I suggested 1,000 acres, we've got 200 acres on this corner, then you have three other corners. So if this is a precedent, I think it's the right one. And I don't think it's of any significance that it's going to bother the integrity of the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
I guess right now, and I guess I have to wait until the vote comes, but I guess right now, there are, because we have the authority to do it, that doesn't mean we should do it, especially if we've got two bodies of professional individuals that look at this and raise the concerns about whether or not there's going to be a precedence that what this could lead to in the future and so forth. So right now, I'm kind of leaning towards supporting the planning department and the planning board, but we'll see what happens. I'm not sure that, we'll see how the vote comes out, but I, I'm not sure that because we have the, I'm sure that we have, because we have the ability to do it, that we should do it, especially when we've got two of our professional bodies that seem to think it wouldn't be a good idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Rick Cunningham, planning director. I want to emphasize again that 200 acres is split between the four quadrants of this intersection. It's not 200 acres on one quadrant. So the other thing I want to emphasize is that when you look at this particular development, this quadrant, and you look at what has occurred from the intersection radiating out, the church, potential apartment complex, and a school create a transitional downward trend of the land use to the residential, which is right on the other side to the north. So there is some reason to maintain this, too, from a transitional perspective of land use, from a higher use to a lower use. And I just want to emphasize again that it's not 1,000 acres for all four quadrants. It's 200 acres, and that's already utilizing the flexibility that was granted and basically made available in the master plan to allow for changes and increase in the amount of commercial or mixed use. I also want to point out that on the other quadrants, there is now vacant commercial ground that is currently zoned in this mixed-use area, ready for commercial development.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Passed.
Gray.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
It is passed on a 6-1 vote. Now we can take items 9 and 10 together.
Roll call.
We did 8. Well, that's 8. We got 8, 9, and 10.
We did 8.
Yeah, we did 8, 9, and 10. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
No, just on 9 and 10.
9 and 10.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed 6-0. 6-1. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 14 should relate over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Liquor, item number 15, Curtin Clydes, 2202 South 13th Street, press permission for deletion of their Class C liquor license of a Porsche And I just want to emphasize again that it's not 1,000 acres for all four quadrants. It's 200 acres and that's already utilizing the flexibility that was granted and basically made available in the master plan to allow for changes and increase in the amount of commercial or mixed-use. I also want to point out that on the other quadrants, there is now vacant commercial ground that is currently zoned in this mixed-use area, ready for commercial development.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Pass.
Gray.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
It is passed on a 6-1 vote. Now, we can take items nine and 10 together. We did eight. Well, that's eight. We got eight, nine, and 10.
We did eight.
Yeah, we did eight, nine, and 10. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
No, just on nine and 10.
Nine and 10.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed 6-0, 6-1. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Item Number 14 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, Item Number 15, Curtin Clydes, 2202 South 13th Street, request permission for deletion of their Class C liquor license of a portion of the basement 33 by 60 to the south.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of the applicant or the licensee, I should say. There's a deletion for a couple of reasons. First, the practical use of this license of the premise, we don't need the area to be deleted. And secondly, and most importantly, we want to prevent the landlord's access to the licensed premise. We have talked to Law Department about what we're going to do. I'm going to have to amend on the first floor about a 3 by 3-foot area to give the landlord access to the area in the basement. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
The access that you're talking about is at the lower level in the rear of that facility? Is that correct?
Yes, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Yes, on the west end.
So, the property owner can have access into that without going through the licensed portion of the facility?
Exactly.
Okay. And there would be a exit-only door out from the licensed area through that. So, in all probability, walk, get out, walk around the facility to come in.
Correct. As you know, councilmen, we're trying to take as many steps as we can to eliminate his access to the licensed area.
And we laid this over, so there was some concern a week ago, and this was the best compromise out of all of the negotiations, so to speak.
Right. With permits and the Law Department, all parties are in agreement.
They're in agreement. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, first, I would approve deleting the described basement area, together with the stairs leading to that basement area and the enclosed vestibule at the top of the stairs. The licensee must construct the vestibule so that the basement can be accessed from a rear exit door without going through the licensed area.
Correct. Should this be an amendment? Yeah, that, let's treat this as an amendment because the other ones...
I would move for that to be an amendment, as previously stated.
Roll call.
On the amendment, Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. Now, as amended. Gary.
As amended.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's approved, 6-0, one passing.
My thanks to my colleagues for that week, worth of patience, I think, to prove well.
Item Number 16, Zen Room, 316 South 15th Street, request permission for an addition to present Class C liquor license of a sidewalk cafe.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Jennifer Taylor, on behalf of the applicant, 6459 Cummings Street. This application is for an addition to the present liquor license to add the location of a sidewalk cafe on the outside of the restaurant and hotel located, which is Hotel Deco and the Zen Room. The application for the use of the space from the city has already been approved by this council on, I believe, April 17th, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes. Mr. Clerk, they don't need any permit for release from this.
No, they already have their permits.
Who'd approve?
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, 7 to 0. Item Number 17, D.C. Center, 11830 Stonegate Drive, request permission to appoint Danny Okomele, a manager of the present Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I'm Buddy Christiansen. I'm the owner of D.C. Center and the liquor license. This is Danny. He's been with me for 11 years. Would like to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce that last name?
Owan Malai.
Owan Malai. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, 7 to 0. Item Number 18 is Dava's Indian Cuisine, 2012 North 117th Avenue, request permission to appoint a manager. They have a request to withdraw that.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Withdrawn, 7 to 0. Item Number 19, Rehab Lounge, 2615 South 120th Street, request permission for a special designated license for dance on June 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with music until 1:00 a.m., alternate date July 1st.
Hearing on Agenda Item Number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Taming Win, Elite Lounge and Grill, DBA Rehab Lounge, 2615 South 120th Street. I'm here to ask for a special designated license for an event that we'll be having on June 30th with music until 1:00 a.m. We had the city planning department approve the locate, our parking lot on the southeast corner of our building. With that said, we have our sound pushing west of that area, using our building as an obstruction to leave any more sound going to the residential areas. I looked up the residential distance, we have about a half a mile away, so having this location, having this spot would be in the best interests of our company as well as the community around us. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could just stay there. We've been approving these lately, but we've been improving them in which the music ends at midnight instead of 1:00. And more than likely, I'm going to go with that recommendation. How do you feel about that?
If we must, like I said, and I do understand your reasons why, that's why we were very particular about where we wanted to have our setup. Our systems that we have are actually going to be used, the same system that Big Red Kinoi has. The speakers have an output of 87 decibels at max output outside. We know that the city only allows, I believe it's 70 to 80 decibels. So, having that, taking that in consideration with the location of our sound going, pushing towards the building, it will bounce the most sound away and the distance from any residential area will be eliminated. So, sound is, would be the least of our issues at this time.
I'm going to stand firm on it.
Okay.
With midnight. Are you okay with that?
I am.
All right. Move the approval with the change.
Well, we have to do two things. We have to amend the area to, an area to the southeast only. His original area was much bigger than that.
Okay.
And if he requests an amendment for the music to end at midnight.
So, we're, let's, I'll go ahead and put the amendment out first for the southeast corner?
Okay. We can do, that's fine.
And do we have to do them one at a time?
We can do both together if you want.
Let's do both at a time. Do you agree, I'll go on record to agree to cease music at 12:00 midnight?
Yes, sir.
That's part of the amendment too, sir.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
Yes, yes.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved as amended, 7 to 0. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 20 through 24 were held on June 5th, 2012. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 25 through 38 are adopted, 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on Agenda Items 39 through 42 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item Number 43, ordinance proven the contract of the Hawkins Construction Company for the Leavenworth Lift Station Replacement Contract Number 2.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 43 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Can we get a second? Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
Yes, yes.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved as amended, 7 to 0. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 25 through 38 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item Number you wish to address, your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed.
The percentage of outcome on the original proposal, your client's apartment complex to the original proposal of the retail, some business in there, would that have been relatively high? And now, if I understand you correctly, the 10 acres left with apartments probably would be drastically lower where they may not even have a chance of renting those out?
They're of the opinion that 10 acres, they're kind of an island in the middle of a mixed-use area that has changed dramatically from they first purchased it. When I suggested 1,000 acres, we've got 200 acres on this corner, then you have three other corners. So, if this is a precedent, I think it's the right one. And I don't think it's of any significance that it's going to bother the integrity of the master plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
I guess right now, and I guess I'll have to wait until the vote comes, but I guess right now, there are, because we have the authority to do it, that doesn't mean we should do it, especially if we've got two bodies of professional individuals that look at this and raise the concerns about whether or not there's going to be a precedence that what this could lead to in the future and so forth. So, right now, I'm kind of leaning towards supporting the planning department and the planning board, but we'll see what happens. I'm not sure that, we'll see how the vote comes out, but I, I'm not sure that because we have the, I'm sure that we have, because we have the ability to do it, that we should do it, especially when we've got two of our professional bodies that seem to think it wouldn't be a good idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Rick Cunningham, Planning Director. I want to emphasize again that 200 acres is split between the four quadrants of this intersection. It's not 200 acres on one quadrant. So, the other thing I want to emphasize is that when you look at this particular development, this quadrant, and you look at what has occurred from the intersection radiating out, the church, potential apartment complex, and a school create a transitional downward trend of the land use to the residential, which is right on the other side to the north. So, there is some reason to maintain this too from a transitional perspective of land use, from a higher use to a lower use. And I just want to emphasize again that it's not 1,000 acres for all four quadrants, it's 200 acres, and that's already utilizing the flexibility that was granted and basically made available in the master plan to allow for changes and increase in the amount of commercial or mixed-use. I also want to point out that on the other quadrants, there is now vacant commercial ground that is currently zoned in this mixed-use area, ready for commercial development.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
the bank assisting it, resulted in the property, in effect, being transferred in fraud of its creditors from the old company to the new. Dundee Bank financed the original four of the nine to acquire the new... or to acquire the project from the foreclosure. Now, I go in this degree of detail to tell you why Mr. Merrick is opposed to what is being done here. Mr. Merrick was indirectly an owner of one of the five that were left out at the Alder, so to speak. Mr. Merrick also entered into an agreement with the old company, I'll call it, in which he put down a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of one of these units. The purpose of the way that the four put this deal together to trigger the default and then, in effect, steal it away in the trustee foreclosure, the purpose of that was to defeat creditors like Mr. Merrick and a plethora of other creditors, perhaps as much as hundreds of thousands of dollars from being paid from the old company. Now, the reason that Mr. Merrick is so excited about this application is any of the TIF money that would come from this particular application really doesn't belong to the Ambassador Apartments. It really belongs to the creditors of the old company, that is, unsecured creditors like Mr. Merrick, whom they tried to defraud by transferring it at a collusive trustee sale to the new company. The point is, is that if you do give the TIF money to the wrong people, and the court decision confirms that, in effect, the right people are Mr. Merrick and the original OSC ambassador, how do we then fix that at that point in time if the money... the new guys get the money and spend it all? This is a matter that is in litigation. I would submit... I would respectfully suggest that none of the... that it is not fair to a significant number of people who are financially getting harmed in this deal, Mr. Merrick and other creditors of the old company, that it is not appropriate for this council to prudently allow the new company, those four who took advantage and conspired with the bank, to acquire it out of a collusive trustee sale, all of which are issues in the pending litigation. It would be inappropriate to approve this application until we know who the true owner is. Because if the court rules, like I hope they do, I believe that the transfer should be set aside as a fraudulent conveyance, and the creditors of the old company should be paid the TIF money that will otherwise go to these new owners who acquired it by fraud, based on the evidence that we think is clear. Mr. Kratz has been provided the legal documents for the complaint. The issue really is, is there enough of an issue raised by the suspicious occurrence, which you can see, by the way, from their TIF application? This has been viewed as one continuous development by them. They've used all the plans that were done by the old company, thousands and thousands of architectural plans and drawings. This new company acts like it was they who contracted for all this, but no, it was creditors of the old company that paid for all those plans. The point is, and the bottom line is, is that the TIF application does not belong to the current applicant, and this matter should not be resolved, finally, until there is a determination of who the true owner of this property is. Is it those who acquired it by fraud, or is it those that had the right to the property as creditors and former owners of the project? I understand that what I've said is complicated, but I do understand that the bottom line of what you do here is not what you're empowered to do, as Mr. Gray eloquently spoke, but what is right. And we would submit that you should not take any action on this until you're sure what is right. And that will only come when we get a resolution of the pending litigation as to who, in fact, is the true owner and the one who is entitled to this TIF money as it is. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you. There are any other opponents?
Yes, sir. Thanks for opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Carrato. I'm with Carrato Construction. Address is one six zero five South Ninety-fourth Street, six eight one two four. I want to differentiate myself from the old owners. I am a... I was a contractor on the project. I performed supervision, construction supervision, and project management on the project. I was contracted by Rose Sackern Associates, which is the construction manager on the project, and Rose Sackern Associates contracted directly with the new owners. And basically, we've been unpaid since December. We worked from December, January, February, unpaid, with the promise of being paid. And there's a number of liens. Rose Sackern Associates have a lien for three hundred and fifty thousand. My particular lien is for thirty... roughly thirty-two thousand dollars. And we've tried to meet several times with the current owners, and they're really reluctant and are unwilling to sit down and speak. We have... Rose Sackern Associates has filed a lawsuit against the new owners and are attempting to resolve that conflict. So I guess what I'm asking is similar to the previous speaker, is that the city takes the time to let these issues resolve themselves, because it's apparent to me that the owners, the new owners, are acting suspicious in their ways, and I think that... you know, I don't want to suggest anything, but they might be taking this money and kind of running with it. And I think that they need to resolve, you know, before it's financed from the city, because the city does finance in the hope that the city has no... that this new building that is providing a service and homes for people in Omaha, that it's free of liens and free of issues. So, you know, there is no... so the city... so the building won't be foreclosed on and, you know, and be ablite once again like it was. So that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
My name is Lizelle Rich. I live at forty-eight eighteen Spalding Street. I also am one of the subcontractors that was hired by Rose Sackern Associates to perform carpentry work on the Ambassador, as well as the granite countertops. The last payment that I received was back in... was for the month of December two thousand and eleven. We completed roughly about ninety-five percent of the work. We were, as far as for January, February, we were promised that we will be getting paid for the remaining work that was already performed, which would cover the months of January and February. But every single week, it would continue, okay, we'll pay you next week, we're going to get you next week, and then that turns into a month and a half. At that point, I pulled my men off the job because we were not getting paid, and as of to date, we still have not gotten paid. I did file a lien on the property for sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. My attorney is in the process of about to file paperwork to do a forced foreclosure due to the construction lien that I have on the property, because they just refused to pay. It's put a strain on my company. I'm a small company. I'm not a key wid or a ronner and anything like that. The amount of money that they owe, it's put a strain on my company as well as my men, not being able to pay them for the work that they performed on the property as well. So if there's any money that is given by the city, I'm in agreeance. I don't... I know nothing about old partners, new partners. The lien that I have and the lawsuit will be against the new partners. But they... if you all are looking towards giving them any type of TIF money, then I would recommend against it for the fact that they have a lot of fraudulent activity going on, based on what I heard about the old partners and plus with the other contractors or subcontractors that's involved in the Ambassador Apartments.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Jason Plog. I live at one oh five South Ninth Street, number four sixteen in Omaha, Nebraska, area zip code six eight one zero two. I am one of the original founders of the Omaha Social Capital Group that bought the Ambassador Building. I actually signed the purchase contract. These parties here, the new partners, were my former partners. We did have a dispute. The dispute led to the foreclosure. Myself and the other partners that are not a part of the new group, there was a bankruptcy that was filed. We believe that this particular TIF application, should the courts resolve this matter to our favor or come up with some sort of decision, we would not want the TIF with the current debt load. We do not understand what the numbers are. Two new apartments were added in the old building that were not there before. We do not know what the requirements of the fire systems are. We had been... we, when we were there, we had been grandfathered that we would not need a sprinkler system. We do not know what the status of a CO is, and if the TIF money were to be granted, and we had no say in where it went, if we were to become owners again or have our ownership reinstated, we don't know what kind of liability we would have. As it currently stands right now, the taxes on the building are about two thousand dollars a month. With the TIF loan, it would go to about six thousand dollars a month. I do not believe that the apartments can support that type of debt. I've read this TIF application. I do not understand the numbers in it. I do not believe that the interest that is stated in the application is accurate. This building was bought again in two thousand and ten for over one million dollars. They encumbered a million and a half dollars in new debt in December of two thousand and ten, and they have been paying interest on this loan for all of this time with no occupancy. I simply have not been able to get to the bottom of the numbers. If I come back into play, I've looked at the value incentive program that might be a better fit for this, and with all of the previous partners and the previous creditors that are out there, I don't have anything to do with these new gentlemen. Our claims come before them. So for that reason, I ask that this be laid over until the courts rule appropriately. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Yes, my name is Alberto Peña. I live in sixteen oh five North Hundred and Fourteen Street. The reason why I'm here because I am subcontractor from David Sackern Associates, and I already have a... I got a lien in the building too, because they owe me money. The last payment I received is in February this year, from December, so these people pay me a month and a half behind, and we done ninety-five percent of the job, and the reason we walk away is because we not receive a payment. So like a small owner, a small company owner, it's really hit for my business and for my employers too, so that's the reason why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Justin Riven, one seven seven oh nine Edna, owner of Riven Construction. I was also hired by Rose Sackern Associates to help oversee the project on Fourth Ninth Avenue. I guess my part was, I was kind of witness to all the contractors' work, and just wanted to state that they were being promised to be paid, and I was witness to that in the owners' meetings, and, you know, I just feel like this money should not be, you know, given to the new owners without, you know, making sure that these contractors have gotten paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Counselor, would you care for a brief rebuttal?
Jennifer Taylor, sixty-four fifty-nine coming. There have been a number of things that have been brought up here, and I think there are probably some other people that either are... that are here today that might be better equipped to address some of those specific questions. However, I would like to point out that the majority of what's been discussed here are primarily civil matters and do not necessarily affect the title of the property, nor necessarily affect the ability for the city to enter into contracts, the necessary redevelopment agreements for this TIF application. I would also remind the City Council that this redevelopment plan, this application, was before the planning department, was before the planning board, and was before this council for approval, approved by all parties all times. This is a good project. There seem to be some issues regarding some of the financing and some pending litigation that Mr. Betterman referenced, but again, those are primarily civil matters that may not necessarily... don't necessarily affect this particular application. Mr. Whaley? Don't mean to put you on the spot there. Mr. Whaley is probably better equipped than I am to address some of the things that Mr. Betterman brought up, and then with regard to some of the construction liens that have been discussed, the owners are here, and Mr. Whaley and I can answer some questions to that as well. I'll let Mr. Whaley.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Mike Whaley, fifteen hundred Omaha Tower, Omaha, Nebraska, the attorney on behalf of Dundee Bank. As Mr. Betterman indicated, there is civil litigation pending with regard to this matter. Dundee Bank is the primary financier for this project. Dundee Bank is behind this project and would like this project to move forward. At the present time, the current owners of the property are Ambassador Apartments LLC. They are entitled. The only issues subject to this title are the various liens that have been referenced here today. In addition, there are some lis pendens that have been filed, which, again, are subject to current civil litigation pending before the District Court of Douglas County, Nebraska. This is a civil litigation matter that will be resolved one way or the other. The owners of this apartment complex, the bank's customers, we believe have acted in good faith. Obviously, again, this matter's been pending for some time. Again, the bank's behind it, and we want it to move forward. I would answer any questions that you have regarding the matter.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. I wanted to ask our city attorney, Mr. Kratz, a few questions.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
Lots of issues have been brought forth today. I think... mostly, I think that they... in my estimation, they're about the ownership, they're about the liens, but the matter is in litigation. There was talk about creditors. There was talk about who the application belongs to. There was a quote, "taking the money and run." I want you to comment on the comments that you have heard so far, and I want you also to give your opinion to us if you think that any of these issues brought before us today would prevent us from taking action on the TIF.
I think you correctly noticed that there are two issues, or two sets of issues. One is the transfer, the alleged fraudulent transfer of ownership, and secondly, the liens. Both are civil matters. Both are able to be resolved through the courts. It's not unusual. In the past, we've had issues like this rise up on matters before the City Council, and I have always advised, and will advise again here today, that those matters should not concern us. We're presented only with a TIF application. The planning department has represented to you that they've satisfied all the requirements of the TIF application, and therefore probably should proceed from that standpoint. I realize also that the money doesn't necessarily go to the developers with TIF. The money will go to pay off the bank loan, and it'll go directly to the bank to pay off that loan. The bank has invested in this property to rehabilitate the property, and through the process, they'll get repaid by the increased valuation over the period of fifteen years.
Okay. Is there... do you see any benefit at all to laying over, as requested by several of the opponents, until the litigation is resolved?
Well, the litigation will take several years to finally resolve itself through appeals. It's not something that's going to be resolved in the next week or two weeks or so. At that point in time, if we deny the TIF or lay over the TIF for that length of time, it's going to have a significant impact upon the financing of the project. It'll be a negative impact on the financing.
All right. And once again, just to re-clarify, it was said several times, what they were talking about is who does this TIF money belong to, but you stated a moment ago, but I want you to clarify it again.
Sure.
The TIF money does not go to an individual. It goes to the bank.
The way the process is set up, you're right. There'll be an applicant in this case, Ambassador Apartments made an application to the city for tax increment financing. They enter... the city enters into a loan agreement. I should say, they enter into a loan agreement along with the city, with the bank. The bank lends the money to the developer to put into the project. The city then captures the increased taxes for the next fifteen years and pays that directly to the bank to pay off that loan.
All right. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items fifty-three through fifty-six shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant City Council Rule Seven C, the public hearing on agenda item fifty-seven shall be held on the second reading. Item number fifty-eight, as the chairman of the Board of Equalization reports, approval of plans of assessment with adjustments made at the regular meeting held June 5th, two thousand and twelve.
Roll call.
Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes. Roll call.
Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.